Ms. Craig, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
School committee chair report, nothing to report at this time. Resource committee, Mr. Stevens.
Nothing, nothing at this time.
Thank you.
School building, nothing.
Nothing, alright. Policy committee, Ms. Craig.
I was unable to be there today, but Aiden and Rosemary met, and if you guys could give a brief.
Certainly. Went over some high priority policies that we respected by Mr. Jokela to put at the top of our agenda. We got through all of them. We took some adjustments and additions from the attorney that was present. What was his last? Andre, what was the attorney's last, Tupper? The attorney that was there at the policy meeting?
The attorney, Tom Nuttall.
Nuttall, that was it. So Attorney Nuttall gave us suggestions on the policies, and we'll be going over those and bringing them to the school committee on June 4th.
Any questions from the committee? Seeing none, moving on to student support. Ms. Labelle Pierce.
Nothing new to report.
Thank you. School personnel committee. What happened to my... Well, we're involved in negotiations with paraprofessionals, and negotiations continue with the Pittsburgh public school teachers as well. We're, I'm happy to report, we seem to be approaching a resolution in both those cases, and we'll report back when that occurs. Executive committee, no need for that. Student report. Students.
Yes.
Senior final exams start this week, 21st going till the 24th. Graduation rehearsals go through May 24th up until the 31st. The Rotary of Pittsburgh Awards Dinner will be held on May 22nd at 6:00 PM at FHS. The FHS Alumni Awards will be held May 23rd, 7:00 PM at the FHS Auditorium. Mathmatic MCAS, if a student is to be absent on one of these days, just contact the school, will be held May 23rd and 24th, all sophomores and some juniors. Those same days will be the AP late exams, so if you had to miss an AP exam for any reason, they, the late ones will be scheduled this week in the library or wherever they can place us. Foot steps to brilliance, early literacy showcase will be held May 24th from 10 to noon at FHS. The School Improvement Council meeting will be held on May 24th at 5:30 in Room 199 near the band room at FHS. Baseball, softball versus Lebonster High School on May 25th at 3:30 at Pittsburgh High, as well as tennis against Lebonster, but that's at Doyle's. Senior night awards will be held on May 30th at FHS Auditorium. Of course, graduation is on June 1st at 6:00 PM at Crocker Field if the weather permits, hopefully the weather permits. And Science MCAS will be held June 6th to June 7th, all grade nine and some grade 10.
Great. Thank you, Lisa.
So next is the Project Sore field trip. Some of you might have heard about Project Sore, it's pretty big in the media, you know, obviously. June 12th, and it's actually a school-wide trip to observe the launch of the plane, so Jerry Beck, who's the creator, the founder of all this, said that he'd bus about 800 kids there, so that should be big. And the senior schedule, Lisa already talked about this, but the exams began today with E and F period. This week is just gonna keep continuing. There's this whole schedule for that, you can check out. It should be somewhere on the website, right? And as time comes, you know, for the end of the year, the Chromebooks should be turned in from the seniors. So the replacement charge for Chromebook is $300 plus, depending on if there are any defects or anything wrong with it. It says Tuesday, May 29th is the last day to turn in the Chromebooks. And that's for, I think it's for seniors mainly because they're leaving right after. With graduation rehearsals, that will take place around May 24th, and it'll continue after that. And the one on May 24th has actually been rescheduled for 8:00 AM. So in order to participate in graduation ceremony, attendance is required like at all graduation rehearsals. And so, and also all seniors are expected to attend the senior awards night, which is May 30th. So it's because it's a part of the overall graduation week. Alright, so Envirethon 2018, congrats to the FHS Envirethon team who competed for the first time, which is really impressive, because they actually made fifth place, and there were like 25 other teams who have other, you know, some good experience. And Pittsburgh High School's team got fifth place. And they won, they received a Community Research Award, a Community Action Award, and the Best Use of Current Issue Theme T-shirt Award, which is a pretty long award name. So, yeah. So, yeah, they placed fifth in the soil category, and just special thanks to Coach Sarah Johnson for her leadership in making it possible. So Charles Jackson, Erin Primo, Madison Armstrong, Tajavira, Winnie Cordelli, Rocco, Archipretti, Judith Hanson, Jocelyn Velasquez, Jizai Begor, and Ethan Abushan. So those were the kids who did it. So moving on to the poetry contest at Pittsburgh State this year. Rohanji Novas, who's a junior this year, she placed first place for her poem called "Tap Tap Game Over", and, which is basically the Pittsburgh State University Wandering Minds Writing Contest. And Michaela Wakefield unsurprisingly placed second for her 2019 Memories piece. She's a really good writer. So, yeah, they just, they have great, they had great confidence and enthusiasm, and, which is a great illustration of who they are at Pittsburgh High School. And 5K for Little Feet, which was yesterday, big event, bigger than I think anyone thought it would be. Took place yesterday at 10:00 AM for walkers and 10:30 AM for runners. Mr. Roach ran, and he did really good. And the organizers and volunteers included Pittsburgh High School's National Honor Society. And this year was huge because we were able to raise over $4,000 in proceeds. So, yeah. And all these proceeds will be going to disadvantaged kids in Pittsburgh who, who just need the shoes, and that's why it's called 5K for Little Feet. So, yeah.
That's about it. Awesome. Questions?
I just, thank you for everything.
On your Chromebooks, does each year turn them in for the, over the summer, and do they get the same book back in the following year? It's their book for...
Yeah, unless it's like broken or something. And if you're taking a dual enrollment course, do them out, you can keep it over the summer. Last summer, I kept my Chromebook because I took a sociology class at FSU.
That's awesome.
Also, to add some things we didn't discuss, the relays, the 2018 relays had a very, very good outcome. The whole, like Crocker Field was packed, like the support from everyone and all the parents I saw there, and the running too. Go girls, we won. Although the boys, okay, the boys, it was painful to watch, you know, considering the seniors have like six all-star, record-breaking track stars. It was, it was tough, but we really, to be honest, we had it in the first half. We really did. We really did. Yeah, that's it. They got us in the middle. They placed their people very strategically. Good for them. Congratulations, they took the win home. But, yeah, and then, we actually, math, the boys tennis team didn't have a match today, but the girls did against Algonquin. And although we lost, my partner and I, we won our game. So, I'm proud of that. And the spring sports are going good, so overall, it's been a good couple weeks.
Questions? Thank you. Oh, just one, again, want to mention, this coming Wednesday is the Pittsburgh High School Alumni Association Annual Meeting. We will be giving out awards to a little more than 70 students, and it'll be the largest award we have ever given. And so, all you Pittsburgh High graduates, show up that night. It's a great night. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay. Approval of the minutes from the previous school committee, approval of the minutes of regular school committee meeting of May 7th, 2018. Motion. Motion made.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. No need for executive session, superintendent?
I don't beli...
Oh, you want communications?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes.
So, we've got some really fun community events coming up for students who are in 10th grade, I'm sorry, in 9th grade at Pittsburgh High School. They would have been five-year-olds when we had the first DPW Day. So that's how long we've been doing it. Next, on June 6th, which is a Wednesday, we are doing DPW Day down at the yard from 2:00 to 5:00. We will have Eva Kelly and Title One activities, representation from the library, and some community agencies, and it's open to families, and it's for kids, because little kids love big trucks. And it'll be also supplied with food by Sedexo Nutrition Services. We're really grateful to them. Pittsburgh Public Schools really partners with DPW to make this an all-city event, because we have fire trucks and the FATV truck, and police motorcycles, and cars, and the wastewater and water departments join in as well. And this year, we will have an announcement about a DPW Day scholarship that'll be coming up, and we'll, we'll share that at a later date. But please come to DPW Day. Those of you on school committee, I know, who, who have some time on the, on your day free, please come join. This is a really special one. And Lenny Lacso, the commissioner, is really, he's, he's really excited, and you can tell because his eyes are sparkling.
Yeah, how can you tell?
It's just like that.
Like that.
Yep.
And that, and, and we also have to report for the viewers at home and the folks that are here in the audience, that this was, this sprung from the very fertile mind of Madame Craig. How many years ago?
10.
10.
10 years.
10 years ago.
Yep.
And every year it gets bigger and bigger. Last year was, last year was mobbed, Sally.
Yeah.
It was, people everywhere.
All day long.
Great, great idea. Thank you.
My pleasure.
If you haven't attended, you gotta, you gotta take a walk through, just check it out, because it's wild stuff.
Yeah.
It's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank the DPW, they give their time.
Yeah, yeah. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none. This is an opportunity for public comment. You have a five-minute limit. Is anyone present tonight who wishes to make public comment? Seeing none, moving on to the superintendent's report. Superintendent Ravenel.
Okay, well, we have a lot of really wonderful things to talk about tonight, but I would be amiss as a school superintendent to not talk about the events of this past week. And I feel it's really important. We're here doing what's normal, talking about school, school committee meetings, students talking about activities that are going on in their schools, but for the students of Santa Fe, that's not what's happening. Some of the, this, this is really an issue that I'm spending a lot of time thinking about, probably more than I should. But some of the things that I've been coming across, there have been more students killed in this last year than have been killed in the military, than, than folks in the military in active duty. More students in their schools killed than have been killed in the military this year. That's a sobering statistic. Since Columbine, over 240,000 students have been affected by school shootings in all of the different schools where that's happened. That's the students. That's not talking about all of the families, all of the community members, and then the psyche of our own students in our own schools who now have to come to school every day with a totally different frame of mind. And I gave the example at our last meeting of a fire drill where students were refusing to leave their classroom. Because in Parkland, it was a fire drill that was used as a ruse to get people out, and actually, that's what happened in Santa Fe also, which is making everyone question again, how do you proceed with a fire drill? There were eight students and two teachers gunned down in Santa Fe. There were 13 wounded. So those numbers are just staggering. And this is not normal. And as a school superintendent, what's, what I'm thinking about all the time is how normalized this is becoming. I'm even watching the reaction to Santa Fe compared to Parkland. It's lukewarm. It's lukewarm. And yet, there was so much energy around Parkland, and I have to say, the energy was not sparked by the adults. The energy was sparked by the teenagers. But that's not their job. That's not what they should be focused on. That's not what they should be planning. They should just be planning to come to school and turn in their Chromebooks and get ready for graduation, or all of the other activities. So I'm, I'm probably driving some people at MASS, at the Superintendents Association, a little crazy because I'm sending them emails, but I'm, I'm really focused on the fact that we have to be talking about this. School superintendents have one job, to protect and educate students. If something like this is happening, that's, and I use the word slaughter, and I don't use that lightly, when you gun down unarmed folks in a place where they're just doing what they're supposed to be doing, it is a slaughter. And if we, as educators, are just watching this go on, and then moving on to the next situation, you know, we're, we're gonna be held accountable for it. So I know, I'm just letting everyone know on my part, you know, working with the Superintendent's Association and with anyone else that I can reach out to, I'm trying to work on what are some of the solutions. This is complex. You know, I'm not one of those people who comes in and said, here's what has to happen, it's all about this, or it's all about that. It's about many things. But for us in our country to think that, that this is acceptable, and whatever side of the argument we're on, we give our rationale as to why it's happening, frankly, it doesn't matter. It's happening. A whole group of students showed up to just go to school last week, and eight of them were killed, and two of their teachers were killed. And from the interviews, and the one quote that struck me was of, I think her name was Paige Curry, and said, "I was expecting this to happen sooner or later." And if that's where we're at, and if our students are showing up at school every day, and thinking that being gunned down is something that they should expect to happen every day, then shame on us. Shame on the adults. And right now, that's where I feel a lot of responsibility is. How do we, how do we get the adults to step forward and say, "This is not acceptable"? And then what are the small things that we can do, you know, either here, and we start small, right? It's all local. We start small in our own school, in our own community, but then to whatever way we can expand that, you know, to another place. So I just felt that we're all about school and all about students. And to have that kind of an incident happen and not talk about it at our meeting, you know, would, would really be a disservice to those students who lost their lives and the two educators who lost their lives. And I realize that's kind of a down topic for tonight. But, you know, what we do all the time is not only talk about where our successes are, right, we talk about where our failures are. And I think this is one place where the adults of this country are failing the students. So whatever we can do, whatever you can do in your own individual ways to take action, to be involved, and to be part of the solution, I think, you know, that, that would be appreciated. Our students and our staff take part in the solution all the time. And we're always happy here to have people come and talk about the things that our youth are doing that are dynamic and exciting. And tonight, we're gonna be talking about youth ventures. I'm gonna invite teacher Sarah Carnabucci to come up with the students that are here, and talk about what's happening in the Youth Venture Initiative.
Excuse me, Andre, before you continue.
Mm-hmm.
I just wanna say that I'm 100% behind what you're saying, and I'm extremely grateful that you're bringing it up and willing to lead us in this, to keep it in our minds.
Thank you.
Yep.
Hi, everyone. I'm Sarah Carnabucci. Unfortunately, our students are not able to be here tonight like they thought they were going to, so Bortis and I are here to present to anyways.
And actually, Michelle Brennan from...
Do you wanna come sit?
Mount Witchesa Community College also is here. I'm Lourdes Ramirez, and I'm the principal at McKay. And our sixth graders have been engaged in Youth Venture all year round, and they have found great success with the program. So the Mount Witchesa Community College staff came in and helped students prepare a business plan for a venture or a project that they were committing to. So they learned the entire process of coming up with a business plan where they did their budget, they did the, the mission and the vision for their venture, and then they were able to have a showcase at Great, Great Lunch.
Lunch, yep. They had their spring showcase.
And the last part of this process is to actually present their venture to a panel. And I know some of you have joined us for the panels, and then students would get funded. It's sort of like a friendly Shark Tank approach.
Much friendlier, yeah.
So, you wanna talk about some of the project, the ventures?
Yeah, so I am the champion at McKay, so it's my role to kinda be the liaison between Michelle and the staff here at Youth Venture and the students. So the goal is to be non-controlling adults, so really letting this be student-led and their ideas. And we kind of guide them to things that are logistic, like one of their first ideas was they wanted to order takeout for lunch. And we were like, okay, that's not gonna happen, but what can we do instead? Because that, takeout, that's just not gonna happen in sixth grade. So it's, so we're there to guide them, but it is all student-led. So we have had groups focusing on bullying, on homelessness, helping animals. Some group wanted to save wild African dogs that are endangered. We have had four teams launched so far, and we have four or five more set up for next week, and the goal was three this year. So we are already past our goal, which is amazing to see. Some of these kids have gotten, I think actually every group has gotten more than what they actually asked for, and, which they were all amazing, their reactions and their huge check they get to hold is like their favorite part, and they all wanna keep it and take it home, which they all think they can cash it, and they can't. But, so it's just really great to see the kids that get to come out of their shell, and you get to see them, not just in an academic setting, but really get to excel in things that they are passionate about. And it's about improving the community as the needs that they see fit. So if they think there's a need to help animals and help stop no-kill shelters, and that's their path, that's their vision, we help guide them along that way. If their vision is bullying and how they can stop that, and whether it's a bigger corporation that's already started, or whether that's something they can do at school. We have students who are trying to start clubs at McKay. We have one group that wants to start a language club, so they don't take language in school yet.
A foreign...
Yeah, a foreign language.
Code breakers?
Yep, the code breakers, they wanna do coding, because we don't have that in a technology class for them. So we have groups that are focusing just on our school, but we also have groups that are focusing on bigger communities. We have a group that's actually, one of their fathers is a police officer, and he is their ally, so it's like the person that kinda helps them. And they've reached out to the animal control officer to help them with theirs. So reaching out to bigger community members, so it's not just about McKay, it's the community that they see.
And I have to say, to see students being so passionate about something and to advocate for it and present it in such an eloquent way, it's been really exciting to see. And even students that are not normally very aggressive, or that would be assertive would be a better word, and to see them really, really passionate about this, it's been, I, I can't stop talking about it. I think my husband told me yesterday to like, stop talking about your venture, because it is just so exciting. It's one of the most exciting initiatives that, that we are involved with.
Well, and what was different about McKay than the other schools we've been in before is, from the beginning of the year, everybody in sixth grade was exposed to it. So everybody went through it. And normally, it's, it's an optional thing, or kids will opt into it. But I have to tell you, my favorite one that's coming out of McKay is a young group of young men, and this is called, I think, Save the Roads.
Oh, yes.
The only road they wanna save is Ringe Road.
That's it.
That one piece of...
That is the only road they want.
Oh, I haven't heard that.
That's for twice now.
It's a novel idea.
Just Ringe Road, they don't care about any other road.
They don't care about any other road in Pittsburgh.
The one that, as it goes over to McKay.
I only hear about it 10 times a day, I think, all the time.
I'm pouring a warm bath right now, and getting the razor blades out.
That is the only road they wanna face.
Of course, of course.
So McKay's been a phenomenal partner to us, but we're also in Long Joe. South Street Elementary School is gonna be the first elementary model that we're gonna do. And what those kids did is they all, they did what we call Dream and Do It, which is a, an assembly to get them all revved up, and they identified their need and their need. They wanna donate toiletries to our father's table.
Great.
And food. So they're about to go to panel, so if you want the cutest invite in town, I will send it all to you, because when you see little kids do this, it's pretty phenomenal. So, and then for one week, they'll take donations, and then it's one and done. They have a kind of a little celebration at the end, and... They have a kind of a little celebration at the end, and then they just move on. And what that's making for is young kids understanding they have a voice, they can make a change in the world, they can be entrepreneurs, they can express their passions. So I think as those groups start to move into the middle school, it's going to explode. I really think so.
And they do workshops all year. So they do a workshop on research and how to figure out, you know, like Wikipedia is not really a good source to go to. So they learn about using websites that are .gov or .edu. They do budgeting workshops, so these kids are coming up with their own budget. They're doing all sorts of workshops, inspiration, trying to find what keeps them inspired, not just what got them inspired. So they've been doing all these skills, so even groups that aren't launching for panel, they have still, at least in the sixth grade, because I wanted this program so badly, I made them all do it, that they all have gotten these skills that they can still take with them. And I think that's the biggest takeaway, is even though it's so amazing to see these groups launching, it's just amazing to see this group as a whole, you know, take away those skills and see it in class and see them working together. They had to take a workshop on team roles, and one group actually sat there and made up a social contract about how they were going to deal with arguments, and they all had to sign it. And some of them didn't know what a signature was, so that was probably the funniest part. But they worked together and seeing them, just how it translates into class and seeing those skills.
Questions?
Questions?
All the comments.
Good luck.
So I'm going to take a picture, and I will be sending you all emails, because we have panels on next week in McKay.
Yes, if you want to be on a panel and see them present.
Send me the invitation, because I wasn't able to be on a couple of the panels, and I'd like to be, so if you send it to me, I'll send it to the school committee and to other people.
Fantastic.
And I assume it's all during the school day, is that right?
Yes.
It is in the morning, from 8:30 to 10:00.
But we do have, for the people in Central Office, there's one at South Street, so you have to only take the elevator to get there. And you get a front row seat. So we will send it out through Andre, so if you folks want to take a look. The mayor's going to sit on one next week, and I really hope it's the Ringe Road team.
Yeah, Thursday.
But it is, it's going really well, and it's not just at McKay and all the schools that have opted to do it. And we hope to grow. Paula's been a great partner with us to help motivate the faculty and students to do this work.
Great. If I could, Ms. Mayor, I did distribute the Youth Ventures annual report, and it's just chock full of information. This is based on prior Youth Ventures, so it only lists for Fitchburg, Fitchburg High, but we have Youth Ventures at Fitchburg High, Long Joe, McKay, and there will be one at South Street as a school-wide venture. But when Michelle was describing, or Lourdes, the big check, I mean, seriously, the whole team gets a really big check. The kids are so excited.
That's like their favorite part.
Yeah.
And they all fight over who gets to keep it, nobody does, but they...
It's very exciting.
Yes.
So the panel could just fund the project as presented, or fund with conditions, or send the team back to revamp their plan and then present again?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Much appreciated. And this is just a handout. I know many of you were not able to make the Crocker Field relays and dedication, so these are books that were put together with, working with Ray Cosenza and our Technology Department, some of the people there. It's a wonderful memory book. And then these are little banners that were made of Crocker Field, 104th Annual Relays, the Centennial. So just kind of a souvenir for those of you who were not able to make it. But it was an incredible event, and I got to spend a lot of time under the tents with the Crocker family. They were blown away. We actually thought they might come and spend an hour. Pete, you were there, Mayor, you were there for a lot of the time. We thought maybe they'd come and spend an hour. I think they left 10 or 15 minutes before the whole thing ended, and they just couldn't get enough of it, and were so impressed with how everything went. They were all given a print by Mark Wadekus of Crocker Field.
Could you send a couple of copies to the Historical Society?
To the Historical Society? Okay, so whatever is left, yeah. I'll, I can get some more also. The Ashoka Celebration is June 12th at Mount Wachusett, and that's at the mountain, and that's from 5:00 to 7:30. If you're interested in going to that, that's the initiative that we're involved with on personalized learning, and that is from 5:00 to 7:30. And if you email Paula, she will make sure that you get all of the information to, this is a busy time of year, everything's happening, but it's all good. Speaking of good, what are the chances? That we were approached by Lemonster, and we have Barry Hudson, who is the band director in Lemonster, and they called and said, "There's a group of us that would like to collect some money to donate to Crocker Elementary School." And we know that they've had a tough time, and we would like to do that. So, Adam, if you can come up also, pull up a chair, and you can represent Crocker, and then if, Barry, if you can come up and introduce the group that are here with you, and what your plan is.
Barry, have some nice...
Thank you.
Just pull up some extra chairs if you want to.
So we'll make it brief. Know that school meetings are sometimes long, and you have a lot of important things to discuss. So my name is Barry, I'm the band director at Lemons High School. We'd like to thank you for having us tonight. And we do this thing called the Icicle Ball, and the purpose of the Icicle Ball is to raise money for the band, and we've chosen the last six or seven years, not so much a charity, but people that need help. And we recognize that at one of your schools this year, Crocker, that you had an incident. I can't imagine when I went away for vacation for the holidays, winter holidays, that if I came back, I couldn't get into my band room, all of that material, the music, the instruments, that you couldn't get into that again. That would be tragic for us. And that was the case at your school. So we represented, or we saw a need and something that we could help out with. So, we're here tonight to make a donation to your school system to help out your kids and your teachers. So I'd like to have our people just kind of talk about who they are and they're part of what we did. We have some band booster people here, and we also have some students. So, with that in mind.
Matt Sargent, I am on the band booster board, I'm a member-at-large.
I'm Jude Austinalt, I'm the president of Lemons High School Music Boosters.
I'm Tess Sweeney, and I'm a student.
I'm Hilton Harvey, I'm the drum major of the high school band.
Hilton, can you just tell us what your part in the Icicle Ball was, and kind of your impression of what we do?
So, I've been doing Icicle Ball for four years now. It's my last year.
Icicle Ball.
Icicle Ball.
Because we used to have it in February. It's not...
Icicle Ball.
So it's a ball that you would go out, I should have maybe explained that. It's, we rent out the Doubletree Hotel. Dinner, dancing, music, the jazz band plays for three or four hours, we have a rock band at the end of the night, we have some silent auctions in a way to make money. So it's a nice night out on the town. You know, instead of driving into Boston, 30 or 40 miles, you can go to the Doubletree and experience the same quality music and dinner and dancing as what they have in there. So, and it's a way for us to make money while we do that. Sorry, I didn't explain what it was. The Icicle Ball.
Icicle.
I didn't come up with the name.
Icicle.
Go ahead, sorry.
So, we decided one year, they used to have an alumni band where the older kids would come back and play, and then one year they weren't able to make it. So we decided, a few of us, we were going to make our own rock band. And so some of those kids graduated, so Tess was able to step up and join the band this year, and it was a really fun time, and it offered a lot of great music and different opportunities. So, it's just that I play in the jazz band and play the trumpet, which is also a lot of fun. And it's a really nice night to see everybody come together, and you can see grandparents out on the dance floor dancing, which is nice.
What year were you in?
Senior.
You were senior?
Yep. What, two days left?
Two days.
Two days, days.
Jude's second, I'm kind of in the seconds. I'm going to Mount Wachusett, getting a degree in horticulture.
Oh, cool.
Tess, what was your experience?
Oh, the Icicle Ball, I've been the past two years, not in the jazz band, but for me, it's always like a fun night. I dress up, and everyone dresses up, and it's just like, it's like, I refer to it almost as like band prom, because it's like such like a, like all the band kids go, and then it's like everyone parties, and everyone's dressed up, and it's way funner than prom. It's better than prom. I play the flute for a reason. Yeah, and then I was in the rock band, like you mentioned, and that's really fun, too. Everyone is like dancing on the dance floor and kind of, during, when you're seeing jazz bands, kind of more like slow dancing, but then the rock band comes on, and everyone's like, "Ah!"
What year were you in?
I'm a sophomore.
So over the past seven years, we've been able to donate money to families that need it, to organizations and different things. And we really were taken aback by, you know, the fact that your teachers couldn't get back in to get their stuff, and the kids were dividing in schools, which would be terrible for that level. So, we decided to make the donation in your name, to your school, to your Crocker school, to help offset, it's not a lot compared to what they lost, but at least it's something for us to help. You know, Fitchburg and Lemons are being rivals, it's, and me, I graduated from Lemons High School in 1985, so I know all about the rivalry, and it obviously goes back way before then. But, in the band world, I like to think that we're, have a partnership to help each other out. We do the Band Breakfast. You see the kids mingling and different things. It's a great, and not to say that the athletes are not that way. Yet, we like to think that we can help each other out. And so, we're here tonight to donate a check, I think, for $1,000 to...
Adam, why don't you come up?
All right, if I may just say, as Barry said, we set up a tip jar, and whatever we collect in there, we actually collected a little over $500, and the band boosters voted to round that up to $1,000.
Wow, that's beautiful.
Thank you.
Wow.
Thank you very much.
It's not the big check, but the number is big. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
That's very nice.
Her father was a coach in Lemons.
Yes, he was, I remember him, yeah.
You know, I just, I wanted to take a moment, you know, you touched on it, Barry, that it's always very competitive, Fitchburg, Lemons. I grew up in Lemons there, I went to St. Bernard's, but I grew up with that wrestling and that rivalry between Fitchburg and Lemons there, and it was always, it wasn't always positive, right?
Right, absolutely.
Like it always is, it's just the nature of it. But you guys, this is terrific. I can't believe you would even be thinking of us. And that's to your credit, really. You know, you put everything aside, and you're just focused on the fact that we had some tough situations that we had to overcome, and just the mere fact that you thought enough of us to do something like this is truly gratifying. Thank you so much.
Well, again, I'll come back to this. I know budgets are tough. I know that school systems are struggling, and the arts usually are, you know, one of the first to get it. So if we can help out in any way, this would be a chance for us to do that, so.
Terrific. Thanks so much, folks.
Thank you.
They took our superintendent, class of 85, Fitchburg High School.
Yes, that's right. She's doing fabulous.
Yes, she is. She's super. She went right here to Memorial.
She was supposed to be here tonight, she apologized. We have a finance meeting, something going on, so she was going to come with us, but so. Anyway, thank you for having me. Have a great night, thanks.
Okay, moving along, I see we have school calendar on the agenda. I've just looked through the whole packet. It did not make it into my packet. I don't know whether, it may have been, I haven't had a chance to talk to Patty, so it may have actually been more to get your input on the school calendar, I think, at this point, because if you remember, last year, you reduced the school calendar in meetings, and the main thing right now is, you know, A, are you satisfied with the school calendar, the school committee calendar, as it was this past year? And B, do you see scheduling any meetings in the summer? The last time you did the calendar, you removed those two summer meetings, except if there was a need that arose, you could always call one. So at this point, I'm looking for feedback, and then I will bring it back to you at the next meeting. Right. Questions?
Well, for feedback, I mean, I think it worked out. It's hard in the summer to get everybody at the table, so, but if we had to, we know we could make that happen. So in terms of feedback, I thought it worked.
There were some areas where we reduced the meetings, for example, I think it was in September when...
There's one in September, one in a couple of the winter months.
In the winter months.
January, February.
But then, like, then the rest of the time, they were two a month. And we, in the past, we had them on the calendar for the summer, and in most cases, we didn't use them, or there really wasn't enough to put on the agenda. And you left it up to that if anyone felt that there needed to be a meeting, something came up, or whatever, that required discussion, we can always call a meeting and just post it, and, you know, you need a quorum. So I don't know if there's any other feedback on the calendar.
I would just, the only thing that comes to my mind is the Policy Subcommittee. We were kind of thinking about working on the policy over the summer, so we can have a running, you know, a head start for 2018 and run under those regulations. So if we meet over the summer, the three of us, that's a lot easier to coordinate. And if we actually have, you know, a stack of policies that we have first and second reading that we can bring to the General Committee, that might be a reason I could see calling over the summer, but that might be in like August.
So all the subcommittees can call a meeting anytime?
Right.
And then, but what you can't do, so if you had four or five Policy Subcommittee meetings in the summertime, you would gather that and keep that all together, then to bring to your regular school committee meeting in September. But none of the subcommittees alone can make any kind of decisions.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, well then, I will go back, revisit that draft from last year, change the dates, and then it'll be in the next school committee agenda for you to look at. So now, we're going to go over the budget. I invited principals and directors here to come if they were able to. Bob, is that ready to go?
Yeah.
And then here, I have a printout of the slides for you to follow along.
Sally, Sally, Bob, she probably hasn't memorized, but...
Okay.
Bob, do you need a hard copy?
All right. So this is our first look at the budget officially in the public, and then it'll come back for a second review. So the purpose of this meeting is to see, okay, I get it, this is what we're looking at. What about this? Why isn't that there? You know, did you think about this? Or, you know, any other input that you have. And then that would be incorporated, and then I would come back at the next meeting and share it with you. So just to kind of give you an outline, and I'm not going to read through all of the slides, you can read them yourselves, and, you know, we really worked at keeping the print large enough so folks at home could also read the slides. But basically, you know, this has been the focus of all of our areas, is the academics, maintaining the academics, and as you heard, the extracurricular. You know, really keeping a school district that values sports, and music, and drama, and all the other things, and not just the academics. Always, whenever we've had to make reductions, to keep the money as close to the student services as possible. And if I looked back over the years, when I look at the size of Central Office 13 years ago, and the size of Central Office now, it's very much reduced. But a lot of the services have been preserved at the school level. We started the Fitchburg Flourishes Initiative on Thursday. We're having, from 10:00 to 12:00, and I don't know if I gave the handout, did I send out the handout? There's a handout there. So, on Thursday is a regional get-together on Fitchburg Flourishes, on Footsteps to Brilliance. It's in the auditorium at the high school, and it's the kickoff for this regional, we started it last year, and now there are a dozen communities that are going to be doing the same initiative. So Thursday is the first time we all come together and kind of celebrate that regional approach. We've expanded the one-on-one device last year, we really made a focus. I had said, "Let's add a grade." You said, "Let's do the whole high school." So that's what we did last year, and we're going to, you'll hear a little bit more how we're going to continue to expand that. All of the high school and middle school initiatives for student improvement, and then student improvement. And then finally, we're working to finalize labor union contracts and we have seven contracts that we're in the process of finalizing and working on. So then, those of you who are new, when we had that little mini retreat, I talked about the Accelerated Improvement Plan, which is partnerships that we were in with the Department of Education to say, what are you gonna do to keep moving the district forward? And you see here, there are five goals on that plan. And the focus on increased student performance, increased student attendance and dropout rate, which when you've heard from Jeremy, we literally are knocking that out of the park. The attendance rate, the dropout rate, the college acceptance rate, it has just been doing extremely well on that. Maintaining a well-prepared team at all of our schools. The investment in infrastructure and technology and then the increased parent communication. And then the slides that come after that take each one of those and breaks it down into some specifics. So as you go through these and look at them, if at any point you see something on these slides that you're not sure what it is or you have a question about, just, you know, ask me. I'll hold the slides up there just for a minute or so so that everyone can read it and you can look at your slides. And then I'll ask after every slide, are there any questions about this slide before I move on to the next one? All right, we'll do the next slide. So that one was, now this one is about the job embedded professional development. By this time, a lot of these things are sounding familiar to you, I would imagine. The Ashoka, the Mass Insight, Gateway to College. If any of these you have questions about, be glad to go into more detail. The response to intervention, the high school turnaround, the high school is working with DSAC Group, looking at, you know, improving the high school. That's a one-on-one initiative that we have with DSAC.
I do have a question about that, Andre. How long is this relationship with DSAC? Is there an end goal?
The relationship with DSAC is, you know, has been going on for years. This one here is, is it two or three years?
This is actually, it started in April last year as a more intensive relationship because of its, high school's accountability status and the...
Opportunity voluntarily to develop a turnaround, a much more concrete turnaround plan to accelerate improvement. And DSAC served as a partner in facilitating the planning meetings. And then this year, the data specialist from DSAC has been at the high school working with Jeremy and his leadership team. So it's, the support is there during the process of implementing the turnaround plan.
I would just make a request that maybe we could hear from some of the people from DSAC at some point in a future meeting?
No.
Yeah, that's a good idea. We could do that. Yeah. So we could bring some members of the team.
Okay, thanks.
Paula, can you make, under that? The next slide is the work on building a positive learning environment. Again, this is, these are all topics that you've heard in different presentations, at the retreat, you know, our focus on social emotional learning. We've, you know, and you'll see in some of the other slides, we've increased our initiatives. We've added some staff members to address this. We've done some site visits. The next slide is on the parental involvement component. Individually, with a teacher-student, teacher-parent. And then, you know, I've tried to increase my communications, both in emails, using Facebook, using Twitter, using as many ways that we can to communicate what's going on in the district. Chad Garner is a component of that. Really searching out everywhere in the school district, the good things that are happening, talking to the teachers, writing up press releases, putting out our own information on that. And if you go to the, and if you go to the website, all of the information we've been generating is all there on our website. And it's all archived. So somebody can go back and really find, okay, look at all of the things that have happened in the last year. So that's an area. And then this morning, we went over these slides at cabinet and there's, Bonnie mentioned that as part of, and that's part of the 400, right?
Yes.
So as part of, you know, we've received money from the state for those additional eighty students that came here from Puerto Rico. And determinations were made on how to best use that. And one of the uses is a parent liaison, a family liaison. So that's another component of parent outreach that's specifically for students and families of a second language. And that's, we're using that funding which is, which is generated to provide outreach and provide support, to provide that position.
A question on that?
Yep.
Is that position, has that position been filled, Bonnie?
It's going to be filled.
Yeah, it's postponed. We're interviewing, starting interviewing tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I'll be curious to, I'm sure everyone will be curious to see how that works because this, the influx of students who've experienced catastrophe is, you know, it's not, it's happening to a lot of communities, but we definitely are seeing the most. So thank you for thinking of them. That seems like a really great way to use that funding.
Well, and in September are one of those meetings when we're bringing, you know, Eva and looking at outreach and parents, we could bring that person in and kind of, you know, introduce you to that person and the work that they're doing.
That'd be great.
So I'm gonna let Bob, we pushed him. This was all blue when we started this morning and we're pushing the envelope with Bob to be more colorful. So he has divided this up into different columns of expenditures and where our funding comes from. So I'm gonna let him talk about this slide.
That's my subtle way of saying thank you to the band parents from Lemnster.
It is, it is, yeah.
There you go. So I guess now we get to the, the numbers component of the budget. And really, before we go any further, as I've explained to various groups, principals, staff, we have five buckets of money, so to speak, or five funding sources. So when you look at it from left to right and in colors, the dark blue is the city budget. And at a high level, we have, we have to meet foundation or net school spending. That total budget is just under seventy million, sixty-nine point six million. Then during the first couple of months after the budget is released by the governor, the city looks at what their indirect costs will be. Retirement costs, health insurance costs. And from that, they subtract an amount and provide us what's called our direct spending budget. And the direct spending budget for FY19 is fifty-six million, fifty thousand. So then, just a couple of the bullets there, the chapter seventy, what we receive in chapter seventy is seventy-five percent of the total net school spending budget. And the chapter seventy equals ninety-three percent of the direct spending budget of what you, as school committee members, will be voting on for next year. The next column in yellow, and unless you have really good eyesight, you can't make out what the heading is. But that's circuit breaker funding. That's direct funding from the Commonwealth. That's not part of the school budget for special education costs. For this year, it's, for next year, it'll be a minimum of one point nine four six million. Unlike prior years, we do not anticipate being able to carry over any money. If monies targeted for circuit break or special education expenses are not spent within a fiscal year, you're allowed to carry them over. Okay? It's not a spend it or lose it type situation that a city funding incurs. The third bucket is the grants. So whether it be the federal entitlement grants, state grants, we have ELT.
Bob, could I stop you and ask, because in the past, we have carried over circuit breakers?
Yes.
So what is the difference this year?
What is the difference?
For FY19, is it just that the costs are just...
The costs have been increasing, so, yeah, the costs have been increasing so much, yeah. So moving on to grants, which is in green, again, we have the federal grants, Title I, Title II-A, Title III, looking at the community eligibility grants as well. The state ELT grant is an ELT grant, which we won't hear till later on what that amount will be approved by. In total, we're looking at around five point nine million, just under six million in grants. The third buck, or the fourth bucket is school choice funding. I estimate right now that when we present the detailed budget in two weeks, that'll be a little over one point three million. That covers textbooks, instructional supplies, the middle school ally coaches, the technology investments, which we'll talk about a little bit more. This year, we're targeting the eighth grade Chromebooks and also replacement of Chromebooks at Pittsburgh High. And just to point out, we have a little over one million coming in for school choice now annually. So for next year, we'd be drawing down our balance by about three hundred thousand in that account. And lastly, in the capital section, in the light blue over on the right, the capital is really city funding along with MSBA. What we have for the upcoming year is the Long Show Re-Prepare, the two million dollar budget. The bids on that project will be opened May thirty-first. Based on the estimates that we've received so far from the professional estimator and the architects, we think will come on, under that amount. Then also, we're about to begin the feasibility study on Crocker for either K through four, K through eight school. That project cost is one million dollars with eighty percent reimbursable from MSBA. And most recently, the city council approved a vacuum condenser pump at Long Show, which is a key piece of their heating infrastructure that really needed immediate replacement for the upcoming heating season.
Good. What's the depreciation life of the Chromebooks? How long do they last?
I think maybe three or four years, Eileen.
Actually, they have an end of life at five years. The new models that are shipping now have an end of life at six and a half years. That's, but we typically look at a four-year warranty with accidental included in that. So some different configurations.
And what, do we sell them in there? Do we keep them away?
No, we, we don't, because they're school property, we're not able to sell them.
So what happens to their recycled ones?
So if they're, they're end of life technically, they don't have upgrades, so they can't operate certain things. But they might be an internet device. So we're able to then kind of turn them around. It could be a keyboarding lab at our elevens. And so we, they still have some liability, but some use, but it's limited. So that's, that's what the term, the end of life really kind of stands for as far as their upgrades.
So Pittsburgh has been fortunate over the last several years to experience an increasing enrollment. And really, it's been because of the increases in enrollment that we, we haven't had to make any drastic reductions in our budget. Just some more specifics on the enrollment. Again, when the governor's budget was announced, the top line, there was a thirty-seven student increase for about two point seven million in our foundation budget or net school spending. But when you look at the subgroups, what the state was providing more money for, targeted for, I should say, there were two hundred ninety-nine more economically disadvantaged students, which brought five hundred seven thousand to the district, and an increase of a hundred forty-four ELL students from the prior year, which brought an increase of just under one point six million. So those two categories accounted for two million of the two point seven million dollar increase. Again, this chart here is just another way of looking at how the direct spending budget and the net school spending budget increases have followed the enrollment trends over the last four years and for the year ahead. This is a slide that I'm really only including just as a evidence of what the governor's budget, what the details are, and some of the numbers that I've been speaking about, the foundation budget, the percentages of direct spending, and really, the percentage of the chapter seventy as a percentage of the foundation.
Does everybody get, this is a slide you, we've shown this before.
Yeah.
So it's kind of just a summary of the, the big numbers.
So one slide that I, I guess, like to try to put together to try to tell a story as, as much as numbers and tables and columns can, is where does the money come from and what's it being used for? Okay, so I call it a sources and uses chart. So the sources are the increase in chapter seventy funding of just under two point eight million. And also, reductions in expenses are also sources. So this year, in looking at the out-of-district tuitions for next year, we had a few large tuitions that were aging out. And when we looked at the net savings for next year, we think we'll be able to achieve four hundred fifty thousand dollars, four hundred fifty-two thousand of savings. Again, that number can change at any time based on who's moving in, who's moving out. I'll come back to the number in yellow later. Then looking at the uses, our indirect costs, as I mentioned earlier, is something that the city provides us. That number now is over nineteen million as a part of the budget. And there was an eight hundred forty-nine thousand dollar increase from last year or this current year to next year. One of the things that is included in that indirect cost increase is one additional school resource officer, along with increases in health insurance and retirement costs that are being assessed to the, the school department. Next line is current and future contract obligations for the six bargaining units. Andre mentioned seven. I don't include the food service unit in this because that's paid through the revolving account. And we're estimating about one point, just under one point seven million dollars available for what's already in current contracts, meaning step increases and, you know, an amount to settle the contracts. And that, again, that is for all six units. Also, we're looking at some new positions for next year. We'll talk about that a little bit more. School building maintenance, we have an increase. We actually had an increase in electricity. Although we did put solar panels in at a couple of schools, we didn't achieve the solar savings at Pittsburgh High, which was buying solar from the Ashby Solar Farm. That savings didn't kick in until very recently. And also, this past year, it may have been an anomaly, but the electricity costs were much higher this past winter, primarily because of this...
This past winter.
This past winter.
Right.
And also, we're adjusting some line items in that budget, which last year were reduced far below their actual spend, their historical spend levels. And again, we'll be providing the line item budget on June fourth. Again, transportation, that's not only the yellow bus increase, but also our sped transportation and our McKinny-Vento transportation increases, which our McKinny-Vento costs are about two hundred thousand dollars a year of that increase. And lastly, we're looking at some, trying to free up some additional space eventually for in-district programming to help offset the increase in, the increasing trend in special education costs, which we'll go over a little bit more here.
Any questions on this page?
Yeah, it's gonna be a little bit, there's a lot of information here. So...
One hundred and sixty thousand needs. What is that, like, when you're saying...
So you've heard me talk about possibly looking at starting a separate program, some sort of a program to address our, the social emotional needs of the district.
Right.
Or looking to create space. So we're putting, it's a placeholder of, of funding that would be used to meet that need.
Okay.
So...
Bob, can you, this McKinny-Vento and transportation, explain what that is.
So McKinny-Vento is transportation for homeless students. So really, it's, it's an unfunded mandate that we, as local districts, are responsible for providing...
Paula and I have talked about this. So we're transporting from where to where? Obviously, bringing it to Pittsburgh.
One situation that we discussed this morning, because, you know, I'm trying to get the background to all these numbers, is a transportation to Northborough. So a student that we have been transporting for sixty days, providing, that we've been providing the transportation to Northborough.
We're driving him to Northborough?
Yeah. Northborough sends transportation here to pick them up, but it's our bill.
We cost share.
We cost share that.
Why, why are we involved if it's Northborough? Was, was he from Pittsburgh?
If the student is living in Pittsburgh.
So those can happen at any time, in any day, on any month.
And we're talking two hundred thousand, roughly?
Yeah. That's the overage. That's not just that one, but a number of them. Right. It's an unfunded mandate.
And just to be clear, the law changed with the implementation of the Every Student Succeeds Act?
This is a federal law. And even after a student... And even after a student finds permanent housing during the school year, if they choose to remain in that school of origin, districts are liable for the cost shared bill through the remainder of the year, even after they get housing.
Right.
That's the law.
Thank you. So before we move on, there's one line on the sources side that is highlighted in yellow, and, you know, again, red, yellow, green, yellow means caution. At this point, the bottom lines, the sources and the uses have to balance. So what we need to do as district leadership is identify an additional $478,000 of reductions to make the budget balance. So when we come before you in two weeks, we'll be coming to you with a balanced budget, but we're not there yet.
So we've got, so don't lose any sleep. We're working on it. We've been, you know, analyzing the budget. We've just finished analyzing all of the salaries from this year, all of the carryovers to next year. We've analyzed our sped tuitions. We've analyzed transportation. So we're looking at every part of it. It's still a moving target. There's also a budget that moved through the Senate that would be favorable to us. That budget would then go to the House. That budget then goes to conference committee. That could come out in a positive way for us. Could come out in a 100% positive way, which would cover a lot of our deficit, could come out in a partially positive way. But over the next two weeks, before we come back, we're going to be massaging this budget. The goal is to get this budget down to a balanced budget with, you know, very little impact on the student and the classroom. Back to those original slides. We keep trying to figure out how to do it and stay, keep everything as close to the classroom as possible. You can do the next one.
Yep. So as mentioned earlier in the prior slide, we're looking at adding staff.
Oh, no, did you do these two slides?
No.
That's the next one.
I'm gonna do your head. You flip the head on.
Oh, okay, sorry. Then I'll do this one. Okay, I thought, sorry. I flipped out, literally. Okay. So staffing additions. We mentioned this, I think, at the last meeting, and these are really, these are not reducing class size, these are not just a few students, these are groups of students that, as this bubble moves through the district, and I'll give an example. You have four fourth grades, and you have 100 students in them. They're going to go to fifth grade. But your third grade, you have 125 students, and you've had five teachers. So now those students are going to move up to the fourth grade, but you only have four teachers there. So, and you're not reducing anywhere else, you have to add a teacher. So the teachers that you see there, the one at Crocker, is one of those where we're adding a third-grade teacher. At Long Joe, the same thing. The enrollment has increased such as the bubble is moving through that we need to add four teachers. Not to reduce class size, but every one of those teachers is another 25 students. Memorial, likewise, one teacher. And then in special education, we have had to add six additional paras that are directly related to a move-in into the district where the IEP called for a para. So together, in this budget, we're going to be proposing the adding of 12 FTEs. Any questions on that?
So roughly, we've increased by 300 students?
Over time.
Five per?
Yeah, over time, that's what's being fed into the district, and here's where it's, here's where the impact is. Sometimes what'll happen is, the way the budget bubble's moving forward, that that group is moving up, but another group decreased, so you're able to say, well, you know, that moving through, there's only 75 going into kindergarten instead of 100. So you take that kindergarten teacher and you move it to the fourth grade. So you've taken care of the bubble that's moving through, but you haven't had to add an FTE. What's happening with us is none of these numbers are going down. And we were graduating smaller classes, but now the population is moving through the system, and we're having to backfill now those classes to have enough teachers for the students coming through. So again, this was referred to earlier, is that, you know, things are in flux, the grants are in flux, the state budget is in flux, and we're continuing to look at, you know, all of our options here in the district. Now you can do the colored ones.
Okay. And again, annually, the, we present a summary of the grants trend over the last, actually, now we're going back the last 11 years. But again, the point I want to make here is what we're looking at for next year, like the grants budget was for this year, is these grants are below 2008 levels of 8.2 million. And again, we're looking at 5.9 million for next year. Okay, so we're down 2 million on net, on a federal basis. And again, the vast majority of that goes to teacher salaries. Moving on to special education, again, looking at comparison of budget versus actual, you know, as you can see, I think, Gene, you asked a question of, you know, the circuit breaker carryover, and if you look at '16 and '17, the actuals were more than the budget. How did we meet it? With whatever carryover we had left from circuit breaker. So this year, we're going to basically spend what we have from all funding sources, including circuit breaker and circuit breaker carryover. And next year, again, with the reduction that we're forecasting right now, the budget goes down by about $450,000.
Historically, are we really, I mean, I guess from the graph, maybe not, but maybe in '17, yes, but surprised by what we don't know comes into the district in the summer? You know, because what, so you're putting this budget together and you're making some predictions about decreased special education tuitions, but we don't know who's coming in. So, I mean, historically, are we kind of, other than maybe '17, are we, we're in the ballpark, I guess.
Yeah, we're in the ballpark. I guess, you know, if you were to draw a line from '14 to '19, I think one of, and one of the reasons why we're looking at additional space for in-district programming is the line is still up and to the right. And that line, that's increasing at a pace faster than our revenue will increase. So that's why we have to look at other options.
So the other option idea is just now that we don't lose out of district placement, right? So we have this other option, and it's a more attractive medium to treat, to get the needs, you know, meet the needs the kids need.
Correct, correct, yeah.
All right, I see.
Yeah, and again, to, just to put it in context, too, again, the tuitions can range from 40 to over $200,000. So this year, we had three students age out that were $700,000. Right? So this next slide is really from the state, now has what's called, Desi, has what's called a radar report, which is a reporting tool that, you know, if you really have a lot of time on, you know, some night, and you want to compare your district with any other district in the state or a handful of districts, you can do that. But all I want to really do is just show, again, the corresponding increase in enrollment, which, when you look at the line at the top of these graphs, and also the number of students with disabilities in our district, the orange color is in district, the brown is out of district. So, you know, on the left, it's number of students, the chart on the right is percentage of students. So at the end of 2017, we were at about 23.5%.
Okay, on this slide, I talked about the $400,000 for students, displaced students, and this is just a breakdown of who those teachers will be and where they'll be assigned. And you can see in there is the ELL Spanish Family Intake Liaison. So then the tech on.
I guess maybe just before you go, so this is the state funding that, again, is projected to be 400,000. We've received 175,000 FONIs so far, and we'll receive the balance after the June 30th, our census as of June 30th is finalized and submitted. Separately, there's some potential funding available from the federal government as well. We don't know what that amount will be, but that amount, and again, that is also for displaced students, but in the federal government's definition of displaced students, it also includes people from the fires in California as well, right? In the hurricanes from Houston. So it's a much broader definition versus what the states.
Or in Harvey.
And then the next is our technology investment, which I really feel we should be very proud of. The investment that you made last year and the investment we're making this year, all of our eighth graders being on Chromebooks, the kind of articulation that's going to allow between our high school and our eighth graders, and we'll be encouraging a lot of that, is really great. And then a replacement of Chromebooks at Fitchburg High for a total of, you know, a quarter of a million dollars of investment in technology and Chromebooks. And again, if you talk to any of the students or go to the high school and watch them being used, it's become a part of the regular routine. And then there's the list of all of the different technology implementations that we've had. You know, there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes of investments in the network and all of other, and other things that are not readily visible, but knock on wood, they allow for the visible to operate and function smoothly. And with the danger of totally cursing myself, I have to say, and tomorrow you can all kick me, if I did, it's pretty amazing, you know, there's a, we have a small team of technology folks who come in every day and really figure out, you know, what it is that needs to be done, how to get it done. And there's never a shortage of projects and challenges, and there's always an abundance of energy and focus. If you walk through any of our schools during MCAS, you had Eileen and the other technology folks sitting in hallways at the ready to intervene and go fix something or get things back up again if they needed to for the testing.
One question is, Limminster experienced a very big difficulty. Do we have any protection, or has that, what we saw our neighbors experience, has that brought to light anything that we might be doing?
Yeah, the major difference that we have is that all of our information is in the cloud. So it's not in a place that's readily accessible through a hack.
That's the short version of it. Is there a longer, more complex version?
Yeah, that doesn't sound.
Well, we're significantly different in our network setup, but we do actually subscribe to a number of different solutions that are ongoing for our safety and our students and staff, like safety with that. But we were over there in Limminster with our colleagues, supporting them, and as always, we're constantly looking at ways that we can improve that. And really, all this malware and ransomware and all of that really pushes us to do that because once we have a solution that's in place, they're able to then work around that solution. So it's a constant ebb and flow, but yes, we're on top of that.
Well, and I think you make a good comment because, you know, here we were lucky tonight to have our friends from Limminster come over here and make a contribution to us. You know, we received a phone call pretty quickly from Limminster and Eileen, and other folks went over there to offer their services to help them, you know, dealing with the situation that they were dealing with. So even though there might be rivalries on the football field, you know, we're all in it together.
And I guess if I can just add, last week at MASBO, which is the annual meeting of business managers, there was a special breakout session on cybersecurity. And clearly, it's a growing field, so whether it's, you know, your personal data or companies, corporations, nonprofits, municipalities, there's a lot of bad actors out in the world. So.
I can just make my own quick addition. Besides just being vulnerable to hacks and ransomware attacks like that, I think there's also, you know, a parallel statement that can be made about our students' data that's created from the Chromebooks, from the new, you know, Sodexo Act about nutrition, and just where that data's being used. There's been a lot of headlines about, you know, user data right now being abused and sold for different various reasons. I just think that's something we should be very mindful of.
Yeah, I have, I have to say, our staff stays really up to date in, on all of this stuff, and that's an ongoing daily activity. So that's, yep?
MAS-C puts on workshops every once in a while, and Sally and I both went to a cybersecurity workshop in Marlboro, and was very informative, so you should get that information when they're available that come out.
That'd be great.
Yeah, what I would suggest is, I had a great conversation with Eileen and Chris Turner in the IT department a few weeks ago, and it's so fascinating. It really is kind of the Bourne Identity, you know, brought into another realm. So talk to those guys because they will bring it to life for you, and you will feel really secure, as much as one can, about what we're doing here.
The Bourne Identity. Who's Tom Cruise? I want to know who Tom Cruise is.
I think you're close.
That's Matt Damon.
Yeah, Matt Damon, right, right. I don't know, I'm not good at movies. Anyway, so next is facilities update. So I'm gonna let you talk about that.
Okay, so start off with Crocker, and actually give a little bit more life to the slide. The insurance company is having a meeting at the site this Thursday with their contractor and the contractor's electrician to start planning work. We just signed an agreement with the HVAC designer on the reinstallation or creating specifications for reinstallation of all the UNIVENTS that have been taken out in the two-story wing. The biggest logistical time lag will be ordering those new UNIVENTS. The insurance adjuster says that the electrical work and, you know, ceiling tower replacement, you know, reconnection of the IT network, that can all go quickly. So it's really a matter of how long it takes to get those UNIVENTS ordered, and installation will be complete. The good news with Crocker is on the single-story wing, the plumbing damage that we thought could have been a worst-case scenario did not materialize. There were some leaks, but the main pipes were in good shape. They held throughout the winter. So that's positive news. So as soon as we have information on any schedule, I'll be sharing that with you all. I know our partners where, that are hosting our students are very anxious in terms of being kept abreast of what's going on with the repair of Crocker.
Could I ask, since Mr. Rend is here, what is the communication with families? What are, are families asking you at this point what's happening? Are they?
They are, and what you're saying is that we are expecting to be this long, when I have to bring the nation.
Like for the beginning of school?
So as mentioned earlier, we're entering the feasibility study phase with MSBA. We formally entered that program with MSBA in April. We're just finalizing the bidding documents for the owner's project manager. That'll be going out on the street at the end of this month, where the goal would be to have an owner's project manager onboard by August. And then after we have an owner's project manager, then we can go out for an architect-designer, which we would hope to have onboard by October. The feasibility study process, from the beginning of the feasibility study through construction, whatever the project is going to be, can take five to six years. And as mentioned earlier, the MSBA reimbursement for projects in Fitchburg is currently 80% of eligible costs. And I should just note, to be clear, that the feasibility study is an eligible cost at 80%. an eligible cost at 80%. Moving on to Longscho, the roof project, we had a bidders conference last year, a pre-bid conference. Now the, the potential bidders have a couple of weeks to submit their proposals to city procurement. The deadline is May 31st. We've had the architectural firm engage a professional estimating firm. It looks like, you know, again, if that estimate holds true, it'll come in under the $2 million and, you know, if that does, we would use those savings to make additional improvement or improvements to the fourth floor, fourth and third floor. That incurred some damage. We'll know more in a couple of weeks. Again, just repeating, the vacuum condenser pump project that'll be happening this summer. And lastly, the steam trap repair, about a third of the building's steam traps are not operational. We have received two grants, one from Unitil and one from Power Options, that really reduced the cost of that repair by 50%, so district will save money after the first year on that. And lastly, just from a, you know, to enhance our communication, it's not social media, it's just, you know, a big electronic signs out in front of South Street, Rhinegold and Memorial, those are being installed this summer.
We've already, I was out there with Tom Peterson, painting out where they're going to go. The one in front of South Street will be almost paralle, almost parallel with the entrance to Central Office, so it won't be down at that corner anymore. It's going to be more central in the island, both sides. So as you come up South Street, it'll be an electronic sign that'll have all of the information. At Memorial, it's going to be right where that one is, but it'll be an electronic one. And at Rhinegold, it will actually be on the Rhinegold property. As you drive onto the property and you can go left or go straight, there's a little island of, of grass there. That one's going to be there. So that'll be exciting, and they're all branded, they're all going to look the same, the two brick sides with the red sign. The only thing that's going to be different is the logo of whatever the school is, the Road Runner, the Rocket, but it's going to be, it's going to standardize communication. And eventually, when all of those are in, it would really be a resource for the city because if there was ever a communication that needed to go out immediately to all sections of the city, and you would be able to access all of those electronic signs with a message to everyone.
I accept.
Yeah. It could talk about Ridge Road.
On the facilities piece, do you think you could just explain to anybody who might be watching and just, I guess as a reiteration, how you take inventory at the end of the year, how you reach out to anybody with classroom needs or building needs that, and just the process of how that works so that surprises, you know, aren't coming as.
Well, there are two different things. So one is a classroom survey.
Yeah.
And that's an electronic survey that was started actually from the Health and Safety Committee that Ms. Craig and Mr. Stevens was on, and that's an electronic communication that goes out to all staff members with a dropdown menu, click, 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 to, for them to evaluate their classroom. And it's got, I don't know how many questions on it, maybe 50, 60 questions, so that they can fill it out and say, yes, my shade is broken, yes, the window is cracked, whatever it is. And that all gets compiled, and that actually becomes the work plan for the custodial staff and for the maintenance staff over the summer. Now, all, again, based on available funding. But it's, it's, so it's an inventory that's taken twice, at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year. And then there's a team that also does the inventory for all the public spaces, the common spaces.
And it's, and I mean, the principals are here, they could answer too, but, and it's mandatory.
Yeah.
Like you don't check out?
No, it's not mandatory. No. That's not mandatory, that's voluntary.
Maybe something to think about making it mandatory for checkout purposes, just because I think there's got to be a way to make sure that whoever is in a room for a lengthy amount of time, who would know the issues that maybe come up in that room.
Well, that's something worth taking to the, we'll take that to the facility, the Building Needs Committee, to see whether or not we should make that a man, because right now it's voluntary participation.
It could just be, you know, part of a checkout process.
Right, could be, yeah, absolutely. So then the second part is, you know, each school has its own resource budget, and that budget now is in school choice. They're allotted a certain amount of money, and then they gather the needs from their teachers. And I'll use the opportunity to repeat again, if teachers need materials or resources to implement their work in the classroom, they need to ask. They first ask their principal, and if the principal can fund it, they will fund it. If the principal can't, they call me or they call Bob. But there is no teacher who should be going without resources and saying, I don't have this because no one will buy it for me, or I can't afford it, or whatever it is. They really need to step forward. So I repeat that multiple times every year. I still hear someone say, I went out and spent $500 on supplies because I don't have what I need to teach. Well, that's a choice that people make. So there are two ways. One is an inventory of the classroom and the facility, and then the other one is, what do you need in your art room or your music or whatever for next year?
Andre, I still hear that in the community, not often. I hear that, and I, I say to them, that is not true.
Not true, right. It's not accurate.
They're not asking.
It's someone choosing to not ask. Now, if they're asking for a curriculum material that's totally unrelated to the subject matter they should be teaching and has nothing to do with the educational process, the answer will be no. If it's curriculum-related, the question will be, how are you going to implement that in your classroom, and how is this related to the curriculum of your class? But if it's other kinds of things, you know, if it's a pottery teacher that says, well, we can't do pottery anymore because I don't have any clay, that's a pottery teacher who's deciding not to ask for it. Or I don't have any paint left, or I don't have any other things, or things like that. The principals know it, they get as frustrated by it as I do, because people don't ask, but then report, I don't have what I need to do my job.
It just adds to the perception that we're deficient.
If you don't ask, I can't, if you don't ask, I can't provide it. I'm not a mind reader.
And I guess just as, as school committee members, periodically, we bring before you supplemental requests from various schools for educational materials. So as Andre said, and I know there are people behind me who, who take this to heart and practice this, if you don't ask, you don't get. So we've, I don't think we've denied many school choice requests that were academically or, you know, extracurricularly, you know, had merit.
You know, somebody comes to, a teacher comes to a principal with an idea of, you know, a robotics program or something that's out of the norm, but definitely related to the work they're doing and what they're going to do to expand the opportunities for kids, I welcome that. Be happy to, and be happy to bring that to you and say, look what you're funding through school choice. It's an enhancement of the work that's going on in such and such a classroom. And the teachers who take advantage of that do some pretty incredible things with their students.
Bob, can I, going back to the commitments and funding sources, the school building maintenance net increase?
Yeah.
$285,000, is that what that number is?
Right.
Is that an increase from what? What was it before? Is it more than last year?
It's more than last year, yeah, but again, part of it is.
That's an increase above what was, is what's there in the budget.
Correct, of this year's budget.
Yeah.
So but, maybe to be clear, in FI 18, there were a couple line items that were reduced far below than what they should have been reduced by. So we're just basically getting back to normal.
To balance the budget.
On what those line item spending is.
I really think we need to increase that. You know, I don't know how, yeah, well.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, we're already in a deficit situation.
Those are the school choice dollars. That should be $500,000 as a bank account, as a savings account for eventualities that we hope never happen, but oftentimes do because we have aging buildings. But I don't think we're, we're being proactive enough. I think.
So I guess, yeah, so separately, in the budget book, I include the capital plan, which is a much more comprehensive listing by school of the needs. And I think this year's listing of items will be the most comprehensive, at least in my time here. I don't know if I'll have dollar estimates for all of those items, but those are clearly items that just are not fundable from the school building maintenance account. And I think when we have the budget book distributed to you, the, the maintenance budget is really for cleaning and basic maintenance and repair. It's not for the capital, really anything ma, I don't say major, it's not a capital repair budget.
Well, can it not be?
If it were supplemented, it could be. Yeah.
Well, we would, like I said, we're sitting here with a $500,000 deficit, so I have not even balanced the budget without that. If we add that, I'm just increasing my deficit, I'm not addressing my deficit, so.
That's why you guys get the big bucks.
We do, yeah, that's why, that's why.
But that's, that's an important piece.
Absolutely.
I really think we have to focus on that, honestly. I think the people watching tonight want to see that we're, that we're making that commitment, not just for cleaning.
May I suggest that we ask the city council to increase their, the city to increase their monies to the.
We're meeting net school spending.
Yeah.
Matter of fact, last year, we exceeded net school spending. So we're doing our part.
Like that trend keep going?
Yeah, well.
Well, whatever money we put towards facilities, we will be removing money from the classroom. There, there are only two, two pots. There are two pots. 85% of our budget is staffing. The rest of it is utilities and transportation. So whatever we move to this side of the ledger to go towards facilities, we're taking it away from the classroom. There's no place else to go.
Gentlemen, you just gave quite, quite a, a talk about the advantages of asking. We might ask the city to increase their funds to us.
Well, that's the role of the school committee.
I think we might consider that, doing that.
Because you're right. I mean, the buildings are all aging. At any moment, something can go. Pipes go, furnaces go, but that's actually, the facility component is not the responsibility of the school department to do facilities and infrastructure. Ours is maintenance and cleanliness, but not in that side of the ledger.
Call it what you will, call it maintenance, all right? I don't think we're doing a good job at that either. I, I think the city's been very good at responding when we have needed those capital improvements, like the roof and so forth. The mayor has gone to the council and, and asked for money that we've needed. And this, one of the things, the city council has always been very responsive in giving money to for capital improvement to the city. I know we could use more, but.
I think though, to the point of, if something happens, then we ask, but I, I think that, what the mayor, if I hear his sentiments, he's saying, it ought to be there. So it's, it would be healthy to increase that monies that are there so that we don't need to go and ask. We have to fund monies when something happens. That's what I'm hearing him say. Am I interpreting that correctly?
And the mayor would have to increase the net school spending, and then he has to take it from someplace else. So it's the same thing with the two pots that you have, the mayor has to deal with the pot that he can increase the net school spending. And sometimes when we need money, then the mayor has to go back and ask for a loan order to get extra money because the city doesn't have the money, so.
Well, what, you know, one of the things we talked about is that this is still a moving target. You know, we're still waiting for the state budget to be finalized. You know, we're still looking at other areas. We've already, this started out much larger than $500,000, I can tell you that right now. And we've already made some changes to the budget, but if, if that's, that's the purpose of this meeting, is to find out what are your priorities. This is your budget, not my budget. So if, as we discussed this, one of the priorities is making sure that if we're able to, we provide additional funding to go towards this preventative maintenance or whatever we want to call it, then as we move forward, and if our budget loosens up, I'm going to know where the priority is, where I need to put additional funding. And that, that would be part of what I would bring to you on June 4th.
Go ahead. Thank you.
I just wanted to add one other thought. It's, it's triggered by what's gone on here tonight, a conversation. I would think that we could expect to have to spend security money, an upgrade in that, perhaps even doing something physical to our buildings to have a, you know, be able to detect any weapons that are coming in. And that's foreseeable, and it's imminent with our situation in the world today, as you were speaking. So I don't know if that's considered here, but this potential increase in funding from the city might be an effort to secure the safety of our children.
Well, we're working with, we've been working with the police department and the fire department. We've done walkthroughs of all of our schools. We've got a pretty nice assessment now, it was written up by Captain Lemay, of here are the things we need. And you probably noticed going into Central Office, we now have push-button, open door locks at Central Office, there's a video system being put in for the enrollment center, so we're slowly starting to implement some of those things. But again, I guess the last slide sums it up, is the funding challenges. We rely on other people to provide the funding for us. There's a huge reliance on the Commonwealth for Chapter 70. We rely on the fact that there's an increase of enrollment. Had there not been an increase of enrollment, we'd be looking at a $2 million deficit, not $500,000. The rising healthcare costs, we basically had a balanced budget a month ago. And then we received notice from the city that there was an additional $480,000 increase in health insurance. Nothing you could do anything about, nothing we could do anything about, but the balanced budget went from balanced to in the hole. $500,000 in the blink of an eye, where we try to do and get as much as we can from grants, as you saw from that $400,000 grant for displaced students. We're putting that money into classrooms, into services to students. So, you know, those are the main areas. The budget caveats, you can read those and see those, we've been talking about them for a while now. This is our first budget meeting, the next one is on June 4th, where, you know, I'll be bringing you, you know, more finalized. And for those of you who are new, you will also get a copy of what's referred to as the Munis budget, which is a line item budget, which goes school by school, area by area, and tells you what the expenditures are in each school.
Andre, may I ask?
Yep.
I know that the teacher increases are not to bring down class size anywhere, and I have been asking this a couple of years now, like, where will our kindergarten numbers be than average class size projected?
Well, right now, our group cohort numbers range from about 425 to about 450 students, and we have 17 sections of kindergarten. So we, we're anticipating similar numbers.
To this year.
To this year. I mean, that, we've held that cohort pretty strong for the past, right up through the current seventh grade.
I know you've shown us this, and I'd have to go back to look, but are we projecting, like, from the three-year-olds and four-year-olds, is there a bubble coming in kindergarten?
It's already in, and now it's.
We can't, we can't really tell that from our.
But it's staying pretty stable. The bubbles, it's not going down. We've reached kind of a plateau, and now every class coming in is around the same amount, around the same number. And then, we're just talking numbers here and budget, but behind me are the people who actually make this all work. They're here tonight, you know, to support us, and they, all of these dollars are just numbers in line items, but every day, the folks behind me, the principals, the directors, actually make it all work and make it work for students. So, you know, we've, we've met with all of them, you know, it would be wonderful if it was the land of plenty and I was able to give them a wish list and say, you know, go for it. So we try to do that wherever we can, but they're, they understand the limitations under which we work and make it work, and I think, you know, do good work. Any other questions?
So just, Gene, it's about 25 for kindergarten?
Okay.
And part of the challenge is, there also aren't any additional classrooms.
Right. Right.
So even if we wanted to, there's no place to put them right now. Every classroom is maxed out in every building. So even if we wanted to add five classrooms, there's no place to do it.
I do have another question, I'm sorry. The budget for substitute teaching, is it about $300,000?
It's about $580,000, we're keeping it level funded this year.
Keep over $580,000, keeping it level. And is that something as a line item? I know it goes into the different school budgets, like, is that any place we can try to create savings, anything?
I'm going to, yeah, I think we've had this conversation, I don't know how many times over the last 10 years.
We had it this morning.
Yeah.
We had it this morning. It's, the good news is, because normally, three or four times during the school year, Bob or somebody comes to me and says, the sub-budget is, you know, over, out of whack. So this year, they didn't come to me and say that, and they were either just being kind this year, or it wasn't way out of whack.
Bob, the substitutes.
Wasn't way out of whack. But the bottom line is, it's not, it's not as out of whack as it's been in other years.
Do you know how that compares to other districts, like, that are of similar size?
I don't know how it compares, but I know that when I bring this topic up with every other superintendent I bring it up with, they pretty much tell me the same story. That their, that their, their sub-budget is always way over in actuality than what they budgeted. And, and there's so many different reasons for that. You know, it can be, five people go out on some sort of serious illness, and now you're paying that person, and you're paying a sub for that. There's a lot of reasons why. There's sometimes the implication that there's a lot of abuse. When we've done the study and we've really looked at it, I got to be honest with you, I don't necessarily see that that's the case, that there's a lot of abuse, you know. But that's also personal, you know, personnel issues, you know, personal days. You have a population with aging parents, you know? You've got people who have to take time off to bring elderly parents to the hospital, to the, there's just all kinds of things. If you're in an office and you do that, you shut off the lights, you shut off your computer and you go do it. If you're a teacher, you do that, somebody's got to come and teach those 25 kids. So it's a totally different business. Any other questions? All right, well, we'll keep working at this, break out the pencil and eraser, and come back in June with a finalized budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are a couple of donations.
So I'm going to move the school committee calendar to the next meeting. Approving a donation for $818.90 to Fitchburg High School to be utilized for a variety of activities, and that's from Lifetouch National School Studios. We're submitting a grant, an emergency impact aid grant for displaced students. That's the first installment that we just received. And to be determined, an expanded learning time grant for up to $1,300 per student.
And actually, if I can just add the last item number, the warrant amount is $590,977.15.
Could you just say it one more time?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Before we move on to the action items, I had another communication piece I just wanted to share very briefly. Last Wednesday, the Fitchburg Cultural Alliance hosted the annual Janet Cragan Youth Art Awards at the Fitchburg Art Museum. And this award, which is in my mom's name, honored children from the Longchamp, from Memorial, and from the K, as well as from Sizer. These are students that were nominated by their teachers, their art teachers, their music teachers, the drama teacher. And they came, and many of them decided to perform, many of them decided to play an instrument. I knew some of the children from other circumstances, and it was really, really great that they did that. So I wanted to shout out to our art and our music teachers, and please, Paula, help me out if I'm leaving someone out, Lori Robillard, Derek DeSade, who had some really great musicians, Cara David, Jen Cannell, who else with our Fitchburg Public Schools? Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot.
You are putting me on the spot. We're drawing a blank.
Anyway, I, but I wanted to say that this also took place the same, the same night as, I believe, our senior award banquet.
Scholar's banquet.
Scholars banquet. So it was, it was, it was really tricky timing, but I'm so grateful, my family is so grateful that this award continues in my mom's name. She was a huge, huge supporter of middle schoolers, their awkwardness, their brilliance, their, you know, their attitude. And it was always a pleasure to see her give this award, and so it's, you know, pretty, pretty big shoes I have to fill to, to help. But again, the work our teachers did to nominate the children and the artwork that I saw at the museum was, it was really stupendous. And you'll see some of it out here as we leave Memorial, so I just wanted to acknowledge that, it was a good thing.
It's the wishes of the committee to bundle the action items.
Motion to bundle the action items. Motion made. Do I hear a second?
Have we removed, Andre, have we removed?
Calendar?
The calendar, is that off now?
Yeah.
All right.
Okay. 18-1002, up to and including 18-0, excuse me, -1004. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I do not have a need for an executive session tonight.
Any questions regarding that? Purpose and negotiations, I think we're a little premature on that right now. That will probably be taken up at the next school committee meeting on the.
Fourth, June 4th.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
Motion made. Do I hear a second? Adjournment? Is it all in favor? They are adjourned.
The budget was very strong.